Twenty-six, two thousand and four, Town Council Work Session. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Proton Vance.
Here.
Councilmember Behringer. Councilmember Dellinger. Councilmember Matthews.
Here.
Councilmember Singleton.
Will council member please make a motion or second to approve the agenda?
Second.
Motion has been moved and properly second to adopt the agenda. Are ready to vote? Call in favor? Those opposed? The ayes have it. And presentations? We will give Dr. Taylor a moment to come in. First would be a presentation given by Dr. Robert Taylor, Wake County Schools. Hello, sir, come straight on up. Sir. Right, yes, sir, you're the main event right now.
Main event, huh?
The main event, at this moment, yes, sir. Dr. Taylor, we'd like to welcome you here to Garner and to give us your presentation. And I have your bio here, do you want me to read it for you, or?
I mean, if you'd like to do that, that would be fine.
Okay, just to give you introduction, get a chance to set yourself up. Again, thank you so much for coming and being a part of our work session. And just read portion of your bio, it reads accordingly. Dr. Robert P. Taylor. Before briefly serving as a State Superintendent of Education in his home state of Mississippi, Dr. Taylor spent two years with the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction as a Deputy State Superintendent. In his role, he supervised a number of areas including federal programs, North Carolina Virtual Public School, school operations, and school nutrition, while also working closely with the State Board of Education and the Superintendent on Missions and Vision Development, Legislative and Policy Development, and Program Implementation. Dr. Taylor served as a Superintendent of Blaton County Schools for nearly a decade. He was named the twenty-seventeen Sand Hills Regional Education Service Alliance Superintendent of the Year and the two thousand and eighteen North Carolina Association for the Advancement of Health and Physical Education Superintendent of the Year for his work in school nutrition, health, and physical education. He was also awarded the Friday Medal in two thousand and seventeen from North Carolina State University, Friday's Institute for Educational Innovation, and received the Friends of Nutrition Award from the North Carolina School Nutrition Association in two thousand and eighteen. Before joining Blaton County Schools, Dr. Taylor worked as an Assistant Superintendent for Administrative Services in Clinton City Schools. He also worked as a Principal, Assistant Principal, Middle School Teacher for Company County Schools. In addition, he has served as an advisor to the Schools of Education at the University of North Carolina in Pembroke and Fayetteville State University. Dr. Taylor received his Bachelor Degree in History and Political Science from the University of Southern Mississippi. He obtained a Master's Degree in School Administration and a Doctorate in Education Leadership from Fayetteville State University. Thank you so much, sir, for your bio, and the floor is yours.
All right, well, first of all, I want to thank you all for giving me this opportunity to come out and talk with you. I certainly appreciate any opportunity to be able to share what my role is as Superintendent and what I hope to do for the Wake County Public School Systems and for this community in general. And so, everything that we do, it is all about community and what we do. What I share with people is that I've been doing education a really long time. And when I look back on it, thirty years, it's gone by really fast. But I recognize that the work is specific, but it's also specific to a community. So that means that before I actually get in and engage and know what it is I want to do, it is really my responsibility to get to know the community. And so, I started here one October, and I spent much of that time getting out and meeting people in the community, talking with different business leaders and community leaders to really know and understand what is important to the citizens of Wake County. And I know that Garner, like many places in Wake County, is experiencing growth. And so, that means that whatever you are today, you were probably not that twenty years ago. I know your population has grown tremendously since then. People from all parts of the country, and they have different ideas and thoughts about what they believe a community ought to be. So you had to adjust to that, and that's what we've had to do as a school district as well, really know and understand what is changing in Wake County and how does that look for people that come to this community, the people that have been here their whole lives, and what collectively we want this school district to be and this community to be now and in the foreseeable future. As I understand it, we grow by about fifty-some-odd people a day. And I understand that's down since the pandemic. And so, that means as a community, we're growing by twenty-seven-thousand people a year. And that really changes the nature of what we are every seven or eight years. And so, we have to know and understand that. And so, what I've done is spent that first part getting out and understanding the community and knowing what it is that we need to do. So I can tell you that one of the most important things that I know we need to focus on is our organizational structure. And I want you to think about what that is. We're talking about what is necessary to support a school district of this size. And so, many of the structures, many of the things that we have in place are structures that were designed to support a school system that had a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty, a hundred and forty schools. But we have a hundred and ninety-eight schools, and we'll be adding, we'll be opening up more and be at two hundred this upcoming fall, and then perhaps another four or five schools in the next several years. And so, that means we continue to grow, but the organizational structure that we have isn't necessarily designed to support a district that size. And so, we know that's something that we want to pay attention to, understand how we need to reorganize and restructure. And so, that's a big part of what I've been trying to do. Also, in terms of what our academic programs will be. Now, one of the great things about Wake County, the Wake County Public School System, is that we have a really robust system. And that means that we perform better than any large district in the state. And that is something to be proud of. But we also have to recognize that we have a number of students that are not meeting the academic marks that we want to have for those students. So that's very important to me in terms of where are we going to put that focus? And I can tell you that we very keenly have to put that on K-three education because we recognize that when students are able to read and access curriculum, then that gives them the full breadth of educational services. And so, we want to make sure that we put that focus there, that we provide the training for our teachers, the training for our administrators to be able to go in and really know and understand how students are progressing in reading instruction and literacy so they can access every single piece of the curriculum. Now, why is that important to us? If children know how to read and read proficiently, then that gives them the full breadth of the curriculum as they matriculate through school. And so, that's very important to a community because we know that we are, as a state, the number-one state in the country in terms of being able to do business. And so, that means we're going to attract business. But as a business owner, as a corporation, as a company, one of your biggest concerns is making sure that you have employees that can continually support the work that you do in your school district. And so, that's going to be very important to them. So that means that we have people moving to the community, but we also recognize that we have a large number of students that can also reset proficiency, have job training, have developed skills, both soft skills and hard skills, where they can go into these businesses and industries and be able to support them. And so, what I've seen in Mississippi and North Carolina is that in certain communities, a business does not want another large industry to locate there for fear of taking the qualified workers that they have. And so, what we want to do is to make sure that when our kids get into high school, they have an opportunity to participate in career and technical education programs if they so choose, or be college-ready to go into a college or a university. But having students that can come out and go directly into the workforce if need be, go to a college or university, and continually have those number of employees that are going to support the industries that we know are going to continue to move here. I was meeting with the Chamber a few weeks ago, and there was an article that we were discussing about businesses in Boston looking to move to Raleigh, North Carolina, into the RDU area because of the things that we do to support business, things that they would have never dreamed of twenty years ago. Well, guess where they are? They are right at that point, and now they're looking to move here. And so, what we want to do as a community is to make sure that we do the things to support those businesses and industries remaining here once they arrive. And so, with that, that gives you an idea of what the focus is going to be for me. But there are a lot of things that also go into supporting that focus. And one of those is the ability for us to retain and attract high-quality teachers. Now, why is that an issue for Wake County? What I can tell you is that as a state, we continue to experience a teacher shortage. We have fewer people going into the work. We have a lot of people getting out of the work, and we have people retiring as well. And so, that's created a teacher shortage across the entire state. Now, as a school district, that was never really a problem for Wake County. We knew and understood as educators in North Carolina, if you wanted to be paid and paid well and be in a really robust and wonderful system, Wake County was the place that you would come to. And so, we never had to engage in those recruitment efforts that many smaller districts or rural districts had to do in order to get teachers. Well, now, we're at the point to where it is becoming increasingly more expensive to live in Wake County, and teachers can't afford to move here. If they don't already have a home, it's really tough on a teacher's salary to be able to purchase a home and stay here. We have neighboring districts such as Chapel Hill, Carrboro, that offer a higher supplement. And so, that means that if they can offer twenty-five percent and we offer seventeen percent, if we decide to increase that by one percent, then you're talking millions of dollars because we have, you know, eleven or twelve thousand teachers, where they may only have six hundred teachers. That's a huge difference. And so, to turn our ship becomes difficult. And now, we are now engaged in the practice of the hustle, if you will, of trying to retain these teachers. So that is a huge concern for us in terms of who we are able to recruit. And so, that is something that's going to require that the General Assembly get behind. Many people may not be aware, but we're number-one in business as a state. We're in the top ten in terms of education in a state, but depending on the metric that you look at, we're anywhere from forty-sixth to forty-ninth in teacher compensation. And that is something that we cannot expect a local community to take on the responsibility of doing. That clearly comes from the General Assembly and our legislators that are on Jones Street. They set the state salary, and local communities are able to supplement that, but we certainly can't replace a responsibility that is theirs. And so, we have to recognize that a large part of our work is making sure that we have quality teachers. The last thing I'll share with you is a lot of the work that we're doing in terms of equity and how we distribute resources. And so, what I try to do is to be really clear with people on what equity is. And most people believe that equity is taking something away from someone and giving it to someone else. But that's not truly what equity is. It is really about looking and determining where you need to put your efforts for the benefit of the organization. So I'll give you an example of what I'm talking about. One of the things that we do is provide professional development to teachers so they can enhance their skills. And so, if we have two schools, and one school has a staff that fifty percent have master's degrees, thirty-five percent are nationally board certified, and the average tenure is seventeen years, you have some really experienced teachers that have a wealth of knowledge and ability and talents versus a school where only eight percent of the teachers have master's degrees, two percent are nationally board certified, and the average tenure of the teachers is six years. And so, if we have professional development that we provide to teachers, where should we be putting most of our effort? It's in the school that has the least experienced teachers. That doesn't mean that we take a professional development team, and fifty percent of their time is in this school, and fifty percent of their time is in the other school. That's really not equity, it's equality, but it is not where we need the resources. So we know we have schools that have populations that have huge gaps in terms of learning. We've got to be able to support that. And so, one of the good things that we know is that a recent study that was done by Harvard and Stanford University, they looked at how school districts in states were able to close the learning gaps that occurred as a result of COVID. And so, that study showed that Wake County has closed that gap better than any other district in the state, any large district, and we exceed what is the state average. And so, we've closed those gaps, and those students have returned to those pre-pandemic levels of learning. And so, that's great for us as a district. But we still have our minority students, our black and brown students, that still have some persistent gaps that are there. Everybody does. But what that study shows is that we've done a remarkable job in recovering from the pandemic, and now we are at a point to where we can now begin to move forward. And so, as parents and grandparents, know and recognize that the students that were impacted the most are probably in fourth and fifth grade now. So that means that they were either a kindergartner in March of twenty, they became a kindergartner in the fall of twenty, and that whole kindergarten year was probably remote. And so, imagine what kindergarten is like, and you're doing it on a computer. There's going to be a lot that you're going to miss. And so, coming back in first grade, that teacher now has to try to close those gaps from kindergarten as well as work on those first-grade skills. So with that, that's just a brief sharing that I wanted to do with you. But ultimately, I want to be able to answer any questions that you may have in terms of the things that we're doing as a district, where we hope to be in the next several years, and just really try to engage and hear and answer any questions that you might have of me. And I can certainly do my best to answer those.
Thank you, Dr. Taylor, for that in-depth presentation. And the main, one of the main reasons that we are happy to see you is because you're new and also because of the explosive growth that we are having here in Garner, and we have concerns about our schools and our students. So I will start to my right with Councilman Dellinger, if you have any questions.
Thank you for making the time to come to Garner. And it's part of your tour, I guess, to come around. Growth is the number-one issue that we face. I think it's disproportionate, though, within the county. So you've got faster-growing municipalities, you have some that are going, a little slower-growing, particularly in relative to their size. So for Garner, for example, we were about twenty thousand in two thousand. We were probably thirty thousand four or five years ago. Mr. Vance told me we were thirty-eight. We'll be up to sixty-five or seventy by the end of the decade. And so, as you kind of do your-
Sixty-five by the end of the decade?
Probably closer to seventy. Put that on your radar. The point of that is there are certain municipalities that are going to need to have even tighter and closer relationships with the school system to share information and data. We did have a conversation with Monika Johnson-Hossler a few weeks ago. But that coordination of resource, because, you know, schools are hubs of community. We've had situations already in the town where rapidly growing areas and parents get upset. And you said, talk about people coming from other places. They come here and don't realize, we don't make that decision.
That's right.
They've got to learn that as well. They're not our schools, but they're our kids, and it's our community. And I looked it up real, the word "community" is, in our comprehensive plan, three-hundred-and-forty-five times, and it's only a two-hundred-and-sixty-page document. So that community element is very important, and schools are central to that. And I think the goal with working with our staff is to make sure that those disruptions, as we move through the decade, are minimized and that we're coordinating that growth and that planning together. My other, only other comment is I'm glad you brought up the teacher element as well in housing and the cost, because that has, it has shifted. I was looking at Apex's Affordable Housing Plan this morning. They adopted it in two thousand and twenty-one. And when they adopted it, the area median income was fifty-two or fifty-three thousand dollars. Well, now, even just three years later, it's closer to eighty-five or ninety. And so, with that, finding ways to work with you all on when we're working, we're just starting to get into workforce housing and housing affordability, having that dialogue with you all on, if you're hearing things in other communities that are working, if we can work in an innovative way to address that issue because it's just going to become a growing issue. And so, we want to be open to talking with the county about innovative ways that we can maybe do something new or different. Or I always tell people, you know, Garner's the kind of community where you could grow up here, go to college, come back and teach and live and work in the same community. Well, now, if you go away, good luck being able to afford to come back. We won't solve all of that, but I'm glad you're here, and we can have this, open this dialogue. And the way you perked up when I put the population number out there, it's the type of information sharing we need to kind of make you aware of the challenges, not just us, but other really fast-growing, smaller municipalities facing.
And so, I appreciate those comments, and I know that is absolutely what has to happen, both from the standpoint of each municipality and the county and the school district, to make sure that we have a smart plan, that we share information and we share data and know that we have to have what we call smart growth. And I don't know what kind of work has been done over the past several years to try and organize or mitigate these different things, but it is absolutely what we have to do. And so, kind of the information that I've been shared is that developers may come in, and they may build communities or subdivisions, if you will, with the notion of the idea that kids are going to go to a particular school. And so, and we all know the problem with that is, I don't want to call it exponential growth, it's not that, but with the rapid growth that we have, we can't build schools fast enough for the population that's coming. And so, what we do now is project out X number of years and know and understand where we need to locate schools and try as best as we can to make sure that there's close proximity. But because of that growth, we have a reassignment plan that shakes most people, I almost said shakes them to the core, but most people know and understand that it's necessary and agree to. and agree to it until it's their child. And so I get that. And so part of what we have to do is to work to make sure that we grow smartly, we share data, and we do things that we know are going to support a community and is going to require that kind of effort. What I can tell you is that the commissioners have done a really good job in supporting the construction of new schools. But my biggest concern is what do we do to maintain the existing schools? And when you talk about having a hundred and ninety-eight schools, maintaining that is a problem. And the final piece to that is we've got to look at how we identify real estate for future sites. And I can tell you that the price is going through the roof. And so that means that we're certainly going to have to be in consort with municipalities that have properties within their boundaries or within their zone of governance and be able to work with the district to identify those properties. And they're going to be areas outside that's going to be subject to the market. And I can tell you, construction costs are going through the roof and that's really a concern. But absolutely look forward to enhancing whatever process that we have. And I know it's, you know, not completely organized. But those are some of the conversations that I've had with county officials and others. And so we want to make sure we got something that works for us all. So we're not necessarily in competition, but recognize we're all in the same boat. So, great point, I appreciate that, absolutely.
We appreciate you coming tonight and speaking with us and giving this in-depth explanation. And your obvious commitment to the mission is heartwarming to see. So thank you very much.
Good to meet you, sir, and welcome to Garner. I know we'd never met. A few years ago, I served on Wake County Commission and I was the chairman my last year there and had the pleasure of working with the school system as well as Wake Tech. Wake Tech was our secret weapon, so business. And Wake Tech would organize any kind of program you want to train your employees to come in. It was always part of our package, so to speak. But then we created, I think it's the CTE school, and I used it probably, it wasn't a Coca-Cola plant there. And I was there for the ribbon cutting and that was totally a new initiative.
Is that Vernon Malone?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I didn't know it was a coke plant, but I can see that now.
Knew him well, it was a pleasure to name that after him. And, but Dr. James West, I served with him and we were big into that. And because they could go there and get their education and qualify as a plumber or welder, electrician, go out of that school right into the job market, because not everybody needed to go to college. And just in the construction world, you don't need a four-year degree to be a plumber or electrician, but it's a very high-paying job. So is it in the game plan to consider more CTE-type schools in Wake County with something to consider? I hadn't seen any recent numbers on that, but I would think it would be very popular and there'd be a big demand for that type of thing for those that did not want to, you know, go to a four-year school or a two-year.
And so we haven't had any specific plans about adding or building additional schools. But we are always engaging in expanding existing programs that are in schools. And so that's the great thing about it. I'll tell you that Dr. Rawls and I, we've had some really good conversations in terms of the students that we want to see have access to those CTE courses. And so he shared data with me on our students and, you know, I was glad to get that from him. And so what we're talking about is that kids have the opportunity to participate in Career and College Promise courses that give them college credit, you know, boost their GPA, get an associate's degree in that area, or they can also participate in career and technical education programs. So what you see is that a lot of students now take those Career and College Promise courses because they get real transferable college credit that is not like what we would call an AP course, that you have to take it and then also take the AP exam and pass it in order to get that credit. Now they can bypass all of that. But the number of students that are accessing the CTE portion is very low in certain schools. And so he and I are going to work specifically to make sure those students have greater access to those programs. And so again, I've only been here since October and as far as I've seen, no one has talked about building a new CTE-type program like Vernon Malone. And so we do, we'll have additional STEAM Academy work that we're doing with Bladen, not Bladen, but I've got Bladen County on my mind, but Wake Technical Community College. But that is what we know is the key to giving kids access to those CTE courses. And so we're going to do a lot in our CTE program to expose kids early on in the eighth grade, do what we call career exploration, and then expand the number of pathways where they can get certifications when they do get into those high school programs. And so what we are continually doing is aligning with business and industry to make sure we have the types of programs that can support industry and give them the skills that they can go directly into. But, you know, I'd be interested to hear about the need to expand specific kinds of programs because Vernon Malone has been very successful. And so I've had an opportunity to go there and visit. We actually did an innovation summit maybe four weeks ago. And we took a group from twenty, I think, eight different school districts, eight different states from across the country, about two hundred participants, and they absolutely loved what they saw. And so seeing those kids gain those skills and being able to go directly into the workforce or to the community college, our goal is to expand access to those programs, even though if we haven't talked about specific schools.
And a good thing about that, it was an empty Coca-Cola plant, which we were able to work at, get in at a good rate and just upfit it. And all over county, I'm sure every town, we can find some places, it's empty buildings, that it's just a matter of an outfit and a whole lot easier than trying to find that five hundred thousand dollars a half acre in Wake County out there.
I'm trying to tell you, Ben, I mean, you're talking now, on the cheap, a high school will cost you probably a hundred and forty million dollars. And that is just, I mean, so if you've got a billion-dollar bond, that means you may get ten schools. When, you know, fifteen years ago, a billion dollars would probably get you twenty-five schools. And so that's what we're dealing with. But one of the things I'll be doing, hopefully during the summer, is to meet with people in the business, the community, because I do want to hear more from them about what they want to see in graduates. And what I keep, what people keep coming back to is soft skills. And that is what they really want students to be able to have, be to work on time, be able to work in a team, be able to communicate, you know, those things that you don't necessarily get when you learn how to, you know, change the coils on an air conditioner. But that is one of the big concerns, but we want to be able to meet with them and know and understand, are we doing the things necessary to meet your needs as a business community? And so we want to be able to do that. But thank you for the question, Mr. Matthews, absolutely.
Singleton?
Thank you for coming. You mentioned the current hundred and ninety-eight schools was soon to be two hundred. The student population is, what, a hundred and sixty thousand, give or take?
Yeah.
Neighborhood, biggest, largest school district in Wake County and one of the largest in the country.
Right.
How many employees does Wake County School-
So we have over twenty thousand employees, roughly a hundred and sixty thousand students. We're looking for that to continue to grow each year. Now, you know, our market share in terms of kids that go to public school, it continues to reduce. And that's really for every school district, even us being the largest in the state. When you've got the Opportunity Scholarship that allows people to pay for private education and charter schools as well, people have more choices in public education now. And so even though our market share is continuing to shrink, the actual numbers continue to increase. So we're a hundred and sixty thousand, that number will increase. I believe before the pandemic, it may have actually been one sixty-three, one sixty-five. And so, you know, we're still trying to recover from that.
Excluding government employees, I would say like state government, Wake County School System is one of, if not the, top employer in Wake County.
That's right.
Yeah, a lot of people, I don't think, realize that. That here in Wake County, not only with Wake County Schools and Wake Tech and the charter of private schools, plus you have Shaw St. Auger Institute in Wake County. So the education, the number of educators is strong in Wake County, in this area, the triangle also because of the other universities. So a lot of people sometimes don't think that out, that you have twenty thousand employees. It's such a large employee base here and retaining employees is a challenge, as you mentioned.
Absolutely, absolutely. That, I think that's, and I'm so glad that you brought attention to that because people do have to realize that it is an extremely large organization. We have a huge number of employees. And anytime that we have vacancies, particularly in classroom teachers, that that has a serious impact. We also want people to understand that all of those other support employees that we have, that's a big part of how we make sure our buildings are able to support the educational programs. And so back in, I want to say it was in July, August, we had some tremendous trouble with HVAC systems and systems breaking down. Well, the reason for that is that one of the main technicians retired and he was very familiar with systems. And so the district had to go out and hire two contract companies that were not as familiar and we were not the number-one person that they were concerned about. And so that left a lot of gaps in terms of systems breakdown and things not working and it just caused a tremendous amount of hitting. And so that is a critical part of our organization. And like many places, we have vacant positions, but we can't compete with private industry. And so if you think about a chiller technician on the private market, they can make six figures easily. At the top of our scale, it may be eighty thousand dollars. And so that means that even if we push that up, all private industry has to do is to increase it slightly. And so for that reason, we've got a lot of those critical positions that have, I guess I could say Generation Xers now, because I'm Generation X and I'm fifty-six, soon to be fifty-seven, and Baby Boomers that are already at retirement age. And so I just appreciate you bringing attention to that, that we have a huge number of employees, but we have a lot of gaps and we're subject to the market and it makes it extremely difficult to fill those positions.
Thank you for coming again and taking the time to meet with us.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Are there any more questions from council? Dr. Taylor, do you have any questions of us before you depart?
No, my only thing is, what can we do to be better partners? And I know we'll have plenty of time to talk about that. But I want everybody to know that as a school district, we serve the community. I'm an employee of the citizens here and every single student, every single parent. And our job is to educate kids so that they will live in the world that they will occupy, not the one that we will occupy. And so I will always want to know, what is it that we can do to be better partners with you? I know that where we construct schools is always going to be a concern with you and for you. And so we want to make sure that we have a good partnership. I would always ask is that if there's something that we're not doing that is to your satisfaction, let us know. And certainly, we want to be able to engage in a conversation about how we can improve. Sometimes we have to agree to disagree, but in most cases, that has not been the experience for me. We find a way to make things work for the benefit of the people that we all serve. And so with that, always know that I'm available. Anytime that you want to have a conversation about how we grow together and coexist, I'll always be open to that.
Sir, yes, sir. Dr. Taylor, thank you so much for coming out and giving us the briefing and answering the questions. And we look forward to that open communication and continuing to grow the relationship with Wake County Public Schools.
Thank you, and I appreciate everything that you all do and thank you for your services as well.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you, you have a great evening.
Thank you, good night.
Next on the agenda, we have the Garner Fire Rescue Annual Report, given to us by Chief Matt Poole.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, members of council and town management, for the opportunity for us to present our annual report tonight. It's a requirement as an internationally accredited agency that we publicly publish our strategic plan. So tonight is our opportunity to do that. I just want to share that if there are any questions about our report, it is publicly posted on the header of our webpage and we'll also post it to our social media after tonight as well. So you have our documented annual report with you. I just wanted to go over and hit a few highlights. And I would just say, as we're, as I'm going through it, if you have any questions, please, please ask. Before I get started, I'd like to give some recognition to the report. So our Assistant Chief of Administration, Jason Hathcock, is our accreditation manager and does a lot of our data collection. And so we would not be able to obtain the statistics and data analysts that we are able to do without him. And so I certainly appreciate the support that the town gave us when that position was requested and funded. He is an instrumental part of putting this report together and certainly deserves that acknowledgement. So we'll just, we'll go through the report, obviously a table of contents. There's a message from our chief that you don't care to hear about, so I'll move forward. Just in our guiding principle page that I'll just mention, we do, based on our strategic plan, have mission, vision, and values. That those are also documented on our main webpage, too. But our strategic goals for our 2020 through 2025 strategic plan, we committed seven large-scale departmental goals. The first one is we were committed to continuous organizational improvement through the international accreditation process. Our goal two is to continue the fire department merger planning with the town of Garner. Our goal three was to enhance emergency response capabilities. Goal four is to enhance departmental training and personnel development. Goal five is to enhance physical resource allocation and replacement programs. Goal six was to improve our community risk reduction efforts. And then goal seven was added later to improve information technology components, such as policies, procedures, security, and hardware. And so if you're ever interested on more information about those, on our strategic plan, you can go towards the bottom of it and you'll see these goals in detail and the objectives on how they're accomplished through 2025. The next page is an org chart of how we are structured. So I'm sure y'all are all very familiar with that. But if anybody's just curious on how the department operates in its structure, this is the page that would explain that. Our next page of our plan goes over our facilities. We want to make sure that the public understands what facilities we have and where they're located. So as you do, as you know, we are almost ready to open our fifth fire station, which should be open in the spring in Catat Road. And then we have four existing fire stations in administrative that the town graciously lets us stay in. So those are our properties. Also in the report, we break down our fire stations. We want the public to know where each station is in the community, but how many square miles they serve, what population are in those boundaries. One thing unique to Garner is that the fire department, that we serve not only the city limits of Garner, but also unincorporated Wake County. And so we do like to break that out so we know how much district of each one is located per fire station. So as an example, Station One, which is located at Main, at the corner of Fifty and Main, it serves approximately six square miles, has a population of approximately thirteen thousand people. But it also serves six square miles of unincorporated area with a population of right at eighteen. If you, virtually, if you were to look at one of our rural stations, such as Station Two, it has approximately one square mile of city limits with three thousand people. Four square miles of unincorporated area with a population of around eighteen thousand. So if you're curious as to what department, what station serves what area, this is a map of our stations and this is the districts that they cover. Just a couple highlights, I had looked through this today, I don't want to read all this. There were a couple interesting facts as we looked through this annual report this year. And I'll focus on two categories, technical rescue and hazmat. So one thing, we responded during, for technical rescue to a hundred and eighty-nine delta-level motor vehicle collisions with a high mechanism of injury, so significant wrecks. To those, thirty-five children locked in a vehicle cause, they performed twenty-two extracations. So generally, that is when someone who's been involved in an accident that the vehicle has crushed them or pinned them in and they have to have assistance to- crushed them or pinned them in and they have to have assistance to be cut out of those vehicles. So that type of rescue was performed 22 times over the year. Seven rescues. There were three calls where motor vehicles struck buildings and then two rescues. The other area on this page I'd like to highlight is hazardous materials. We had an increase of hazardous materials this year, a cause of right at 30%, 27.9%. And roughly 70% of those were natural gas and LP gas leaks. And they're attributed a lot of times to new construction. When you're building properties and when you're building apartments and those things and doing highway projects, a lot of times gas lines can be struck and damaged. So we're attributing that increase of calls a lot to the construction around our community. Those were just two areas that I would hit on this page. To the next page, this is just highlights of each one of our programs. Community risk reduction was one of our biggest areas of weakness historically. We were reactive in nature, so when somebody wanted us to come do a fire prevention school, we would go, but we weren't proactive in the community. We weren't doing our own programs. And so we've got a captain of community risk reduction now who is much more involved in the community and these stats are a product of that. This page goes over the amount of training that our staff receive each year. And one of the highlights I just wanted to hit towards the bottom is our scholarships. So we provide scholarships to employees and each year we seem to have more and more that are taking advantage of that. And so I am proud to see that they are doing that and increasing their formal education. If we get into the response statistics, so we'll look at the district as the department as a whole. When you look at our entire fire service district, we serve approximately 65,000 citizens. Delinger, your comment was interesting about the population of the next decade, so I wrote that down. But we service approximately 80 square miles of district, including the town of Garner and unincorporated Wake County. We had 7,100 calls for service. So each call for service may get one unit or depending on the call, it may get several units. So your unit responses generally will be more than calls for service. So for the 7,100 calls for service, there were 10,000 unit responses for our units in the department. We had over 26,000 hours of training documented. Of the calls of the 7,100 calls, 203 were fire calls, which equates to right at 3% of our demand. 4,500 medical calls, which equates to somewhere around 64%. And then the hazardous calls, fire alarm activations. And then I will note cardiac arrests. So that's just not medical calls. These are calls where someone has actually stopped, their heart has stopped beating and stopped breathing. And so there were 57 cardiac arrest calls that we responded to last year. Historic data, if you're just interested in call and over the last three years, this breaks it down each year for 2020 to 2023. We saw, last year, we saw a 12% increase of call volume. It's one of the largest increases that we had seen in a decade. And this year did not increase that much. Historically, you'll see 3% to 5% is a national average of call demand increases. We attributed last year's 12% due to EMS had a shortage of paramedics and ambulances. And so we were providing more medical call coverage than before. COVID increased our call volume to some of those as well. So that, they were able to, I think, have two academies in between then and now. And so our call, our medical call demand has plateaued somewhat, but we still saw an increase in call demand, but not that we saw last year. We do have a cost benefit analysis when we look at how much does it cost to operate? Our cost per incident is around $1,482 per call, which costs per thousand residents $110. When we look at our fire loss, so we're trying to calculate how much damage was lost in fires versus how much we saved. There was approximately $1.8 million of property and content lost over the course of the year, but we were able to save $14 million worth of property that we responded to. So we're certainly proud of that number. Call demand by stations. So if you're curious as to what station runs what percentage of calls, our two stations that are located inside the city limits of Garner are our highest demand. Station One last year ran 25,000 calls. Station Three, 2,200. And some years they were, they switch. You'll find some years Station Three runs more, some years Station One, but their demand is very similar. And then our other two stub stations, their demand is similar as well. So they're usually right around 1,000 to 1,500 calls per year. We do break down the calls inside the city versus a rural district. So Station One and Three being inside the city limits were right around 2,000 calls apiece versus 200 or 300 calls apiece in the county area. And it's inverse when you look at Station Two and Four, where there, you know, a couple hundred calls in the city and then it's certainly larger in the rural area. Statistics just continued, we operate off three different shifts. They love to see who can run the most calls. It's just a competition for the, truly, it's, there's nothing they can do. It's just when, as we respond, it generally shakes out because they work an even number of days per year, around 33% each. So that's, the only thing that would skew that is if we have some catastrophic storm for a couple of days, something that really escalates call volume. But most of the time, they're around 30% each. A note about mutual aid, so a lot of times when we have a call that's significant, we require help or we go. For Garner, we gave three, we gave help to other departments 304 times last year, but we required help over 1,000. That is a very large number and mainly it's attributed to our call demand because a lot of times all of our units are out on calls and other departments are having to assist us. Also, if we have a large working fire, they have automatic mutual aid. But you'll find that percentage for us is much higher than other comparable departments based on demand. We require way more help than what we give. Activities to the public, we provided community engagements to over 6,000 adults and 6,000 children last year. And then one question we get because the medical calls are the largest portion of the responses, we broke that down somewhat. So our most common medical call was a breathing difficulty at 400 calls, chest pains, and then unconscious subjects. Daily staffing, we were at minimum staffing 56% last year. That number is really good for us and it was mainly attributed to our fire academy graduated. And so we've had those people on shift awaiting the opening of Station Five, which has helped our staffing levels. Once Station Five opens up, our staffing will evenly, be more evenly distributed. But that's our minimum staffing last year at 56. Breaks down our units of, top units responded. Engine One was our busiest engine last year at 2,600. When we get into civilian or firefighter casualties, we always like to document if there were any fatalities or injuries during a fire. Had one civilian injury and three fire injuries during actual fires of the year. This is something that I have really tried to pay attention in the last couple of years of determining on scene time because that's for us, that is a reliability issue. So when a unit runs a lot of calls or is on scene for a long period of time, they're unable to respond to another call in their, in their area. So their unit reliability decreases and that's a problem. So we like, we like them to be in service and we like for them to get through the calls as swiftly as possible. So, you know, we're trying to create this chart to see how long are they staying on these types of calls? Obviously fires, an actual fire takes us the longest amount of time and it could be several hours. Last year, on average, it was an hour and 50 minutes. The medical calls are the largest percentage of our calls and they're really around 45 minutes of on scene time. So by the time you take call processing, you take dispatch, travel time, you're about an hour a call for medical calls for a unit. And so that just breaks down your time of all, you know, how much does it, how much time does it take to generally respond to these type of incidents? And then we have turnout times, travel times, on scene times, and I won't go through that tonight, but these, you essentially have total response time and that's what the community really pays attention to. But for us, there's a lot of pieces. You have call processing, meaning 911 gets the call, processes the call before we're ever aware of it. And we want that to be a minute and a half. Realistically, it's three minutes. And so that's three minutes of a clock that we have no control over. Then we have turnout time and that's what, that is from the time that we receive the alarm until forward motion of the truck takes place. So the amount of time for them to get dressed and get out of the fire station, that's something that we have control over. And I set a benchmark of 90 seconds, a minute and a half. And so we monitor how long it takes them to do that. Then you have travel time. That's how long it takes to get there. We have an 80-square-mile district, so realistically, it's seven to nine minutes sometimes. And so then you take all those times and then how long it takes, you know, to be on call, that's where our total response time really comes into play. So we track each one of these separately and individually, not just the total length of the call. And then I'll end this with just a couple maps. So just, this map shows all of our call locations for the year. So in the, in the dots, so you can see this is really the city limits of Garner here. You can see where the call density really picks up. This is our, you know, more suburban area in this way out here. These are our existing fire stations. This was a heat map, so this looks, you know, you can see your hotspots of the community on where our call density is. To the right is the United States National Grid System. So this looks at it differently. We can overlay this grid system on any other fire department and look at their community, look at their districts, and they can do the same. And these grids show how many calls were in that grid for the year. So, you know, for example, if you're looking to the top left, that's 52 calls in that grid. Then we can start honing down at streets and actual businesses and homes and things like that to determine where this density is. And then if you remember towards the beginning of the presentation, I talked about calls versus units. So this is unit responses. So these are all of the individual fire truck responses through the year and you can see the density here versus here or here. And as the, as the town annexes and grows and the community grows, you'll see this density spread out as it's developed.
Chief Poole, if you go back to hotspots, if you can identify specifically where some of those are, because I'm having, orienting me. So on the left side, that's your 401, 70 splat. The middle one, is that Timber, Avisboro? And then the other is 50, Highway 50?
Yes, sir. Yeah, our, our largest hotspot is the 70 mechanical, yeah, historically, over the last five years. Anytime, I look at, we look at a weekly report of this, that's where it is. And then you've got these other densities around the Avisboro and 50 corridor as well. But over 99% of the time, our hottest demand zone is the mechanical 70 area.
Now, Avisboro Timber is mostly car accidents.
It's car accidents. You've got a couple rest homes and so those increase medical calls. It's, you know, travel, commercial parks towards the other end. It's a, there's, there's a lot of reasons as to why. What we typically dive into currently are any outliers. So is there a particular address that we've constantly running to that we could maybe do community outreach to? Things like that. These, this is again, hotspots based on unit responses. So that concludes the annual report that we have. It's a 12-page document. I'll be glad to answer any question, go back, anything.
Chief Poole, thank you so much for, your organization does an outstanding job. Highly respect them and everything that you do. And we will take questions from the council. Mr. Matthews?
Great report, chief. I always look forward to, these are good numbers and are we, two questions. Are we the busiest and largest fire department in the county excluding Raleigh, maybe?
Yeah, outside of Raleigh, we would, we would have, of any of the county agencies, we have the largest response district and the largest call volume.
And my other question, I know as part of a process we're working on, we've been looking at and with the merger and some other things, is Station Two, the relocation, trying to get it more strategically placed because with that southern loop coming through there as well as Old Stage Road, you're talking about wrecks and responses and what have you, that's going to be, that's going to be a nice addition to that area back in there. However, it's going to run you guys pretty hard and heavy, I'm thinking.
Yeah, with our existing stations, Station Two has a couple contributing factors to look at relocating it, rebuilding it. A, it was, it was a metal butler building built in 1976 that was a substation. It was never designed to house anybody. An engine company and ambulance, you know, reside out of there. So the living conditions have deteriorated somewhat, but also the location of it as well. Could we more strategically place that to better suit the community? We're undergoing an internal fire station location study now to determine that. And Wake County is also, they have an administrative committee that is doing a long-range planning analysis for the unincorporated area. So there are two studies working side by side for those studies to help try to, to take a look at that.
Thanks, sir.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Singletary?
Yes, thank you, chief. Lot of information as always, a lot of statistics. Yeah, we're on top of, top of that. I know that's important if you try to plan. And under Station Five will, as you said, help spread out the workload or spread out the number of employees, but when 540 opens, I know that's one of the keys there is y'all are going to have to respond to all accidents on that, a certain area, so many miles on that freeway. So I don't think grasp that, you know, fire stations in Wake County run first responder. I just don't understand it. And as you mentioned, with the shortage on the EMS side, that's why probably some of your numbers were up last year. So anyway, good information and good service and good work that y'all do.
Thank you. Alvin Berger?
I would just echo that great report and great work that you fellows do. Can you tell us, chief, what the comparison is between fire calls and medical calls?
Like the percentage of comparison? Yes, ma'am. So if you look at, if you're just talking about an actual fire, so a legitimate, something's on fire, a house, apartment, a car, a fire, we ran 203 actual fires last year, which equated 3%. Medical calls were 4,500, which was 64%. So day to day, overwhelmingly, the largest amount of calls we run are medical first responder calls.
I think that in general, we don't, we don't realize how much the fire department does, serves the community other than putting out fires. We call it the fire department, the fire engines are, make a lot of noise, they're red, but they do a whole lot more than just deal with fires.
Yeah, maybe a shameless plug is we, we are an EMT department, so we run anything that is considered life-threatening. The intention is a lot of times we can get to that call before EMS and so we're able to start patient care. There are some specialized medicines that we can administer being an EMT department such as albuterol, epinephrine, Narcan, a lot of these drugs we can get started that will truly save somebody's life. And so that's the intent. And then certainly, once the paramedics get there, we take a support role, make sure they have what they need, assist them in loading the patients, and then once they transport, we return to service. But that is, that's a big part of our daily operations. Yes, ma'am.
Any more questions from council?
Thank you for the information and all you do. It's always good to point to the fire department when people, what's great about Garner? And you go, fire department is really great too. So you, kind of, we've kind of touched on 540 and then plans for stations. So I'd gone back and looked at the comp plan and we actually in the comp plan had sort of roughly said two new fire stations, kind of equidistant on other sides of where Station Two is. So the, the analysis that's being done now with the county, what's the, what's the timeline for coming to a decision on general location of the substations? Are we talking like six months or a year?
So the Wake County's administrative study is ongoing and I serve on that, that committee. What, they're, they look at things a little bit differently than what, what we're looking at. So where they're really committed- really committed to is travel time. So they want to make sure that, and they only really look at structure fires. So that's their concentration. So in their study, when a house is on fire, they want to make sure someone is getting there in seven minutes. I'm just using a fictitious number. And so they're evaluating each year, all of the actual structure fires in the unincorporated area and what the travel times are. And then when they're not met, they're looking at where are they not met and what that looks like. And so that's a very, that's a different, that's a different look than what we're doing. We're looking at population growth, annexation, we're looking at call demand, we're looking at unit reliability. It's just a different picture for us. I think the combination of both will be great because they look at things differently. And I mentioned in a meeting earlier today, the previous Fire Service Director used school system data to do one. And they, but it's what's, I think, kind of funny is, all of these kind of point to similar directions. It's just a matter of how you look at it. And so I would say our study, we would have a lot more information by the end of the fiscal year. We'll be able to look at it into the summer to the fall time for us. I could get you the county data. For as far as what we, our deficiencies, there's an area, Rock Service Station Road, 42, the Willis Springs area of our district. There's an area that we can't get to or Fuquay to meet their travel time. It's just too far away. We have the staff, but it's too far. And so I do know, but the county study, they're at some point going to look at a station in that area. Whose that would be and where is to be determined. But for us, we're looking development, New Bethel Church Road, 50 Highway, those areas, we've got 401 covered. So it's a different picture for us.
Yeah, because I just, again, when going back to look at the comp plan, it makes sense where they're sort of looking, because you're looking at 50 and 540, and you're looking where you just said. And I guess, lead some other question, which is, the timeline of this is really important, because 540 is going to be here. And so then my question is, what do you anticipate the opening of 540 to do on call demand and resources in the meantime?
So I'll tell you this, I'll quote John Olson, who he was the operations chief for Wake County EMS, and he retired. When we started planning Station 5 and we looked at 540, John said, this will look like Briar Creek in 10 years. Because that's what happened. The Briar Creek area, it can't, and they couldn't find land for their stations and these things. And so I listened to what John said. And so I think, you know, if people are wondering what that area will look like in time, it may very well look like something out of Briar Creek. So that is a concern for us, just based on where the access points are throughout our district.
I guess, again, I'll ask it the same way, but in a different way. So when 540 opens, is that going to put, and you don't have these new stations for two or three years, do you anticipate that creating a strain on time and effectiveness? Because it's not the strongest physical station.
Yep. So, yes, so once 540 opens, it will certainly put more of a demand on at least two of our fire stations, absolutely. But one thing we need to do, and I know this goes against the grain, but you also got to look at what that does. So, you know, we can predict that the best we can, but seeing it, seeing what demand goes on, it also will help some, too. So I think, I think this, I think getting Station 5 open and operational, getting that improvement, continuing to look at where we place Station 2 is a really good start to getting ahead of that problem. And then an additional station, you know, towards the western part is maybe something. But 5 and 2 will address 540 more than anything.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any more questions?
A comment, talking to Chief Poole this sometime back, that in the world of EMS and first responder, and especially when they had the shortage of EMS people, and it seemed like it's an ongoing battle for Wake County. But the fact is, if a first responder of Garner fires goes on that particular call, they have to remain there to EMS shows up. And that affects that apparatus and that crew staying there when something could be going on down the road. They cannot leave. That's where that calling in from outside of our area is coming in. Has that had a whole lot to do with that?
Yeah, it does. So what he's talking about is, it's considered by law duty to act. So once we've initiated any type of patient care, we cannot release that, we don't have that ability. The paramedics have to do that. And so once we're there, we can't leave until an ambulance arrives. That would be considered negligence. So, yes, a lot of times, especially last year, we would be on scene for an extended period of time awaiting an ambulance. It has gotten better. So that, it has improved. But that is certainly a reliability issue, is the length of time we're there until transfer of care has occurred. And that take, once they get on scene, they've got to get all of our information. Like, it takes some time to transfer that care physically before we can demobilize. So, yes, that, we can't go, we can't go to a call and leave before the ambulance gets there.
Thank you for sharing that. For those people that are watching, it's a bit of information a lot of people don't realize. Thanks, sir.
Welcome.
Thank you, chief.
Anybody else, any more questions?
Chief Poole, thank you so much for your report. And we have two of the fire board members here with us this evening, Ms. Nancy Anderson, and also the president of the board, Mr. Joe Sample. Good to see you both.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity.
You're quite welcome, sir. Thank you. Okay. Discussions and reports. Next up, zoning amendment, ZTA 2301. Will be presented by Mr. Jeff Trezenberg, the planning director.
Good evening, Mayor Paton Vance, council members. You can't get rid of me, can you? It's good to be here in front of you tonight in a work session. We had previously talked about this text amendment in the fall. It was at the same time that we introduced the text amendment for the technical corrections. At the time, it was conveyed that we wanted to kind of wait, get the technical corrections taken care of, get the plan adopted, and then come back to this. So staff is ready, if you are, to bring this back and potentially get it started down the process of a public hearing. We have been adding to it, though, in the intervening time, just trying to pick up on different things that have been mentioned by council members during meetings and case reviews. So we've tried to capture a few additional things. Some of what was in the original draft actually got transferred to the technical corrections draft. So it has shrunk and then expanded a little bit. But tonight, I'm going to use the attachment as kind of a, as a guide for going through these amendments with you tonight. And then I will just navigate to the portion of the staff report that shows the proposed text. And then I will focus mostly as well on what has been added. I realize, though, that it has been a while since we've talked about this and you've looked at it. So I will try to at least touch briefly on kind of each major change as well, but put my focus on the new. If that sounds good?
Sounds good.
Okay. All right. So, again, referring to the attachment, I tried to kind of group these in some topic areas, just so we could maybe talk a little more cohesively about these. Just overall, I would note that throughout the document, you know, we would be correcting any cross-references, section references, anything that would be in conflict that's not called out specifically right here. But we would get all those associated changes done. And then in terms of kind of the first focus area, they kind of have to do around adaptive reuse of sites, or efficient use of sites, or more intensive use of the property as the Garner Forward Plan may call for. So the first, the first one, and what I did again, is I still kept kind of the objective or the recommendation in the comprehensive plan that each amendment is tied to. So this first one, again, focuses on the adaptive reuse of existing residential for commercial uses, to only require upfits to buffers and screening and outdoor lighting for changes of use where the parcel has access to shared and/or public parking. So here again, this is in the non-conformities chapter, Section 2.72. And we would note that these things here, when you do have that change of use from residential to non-residential, that they're not required for a change of use that already meets the off-street parking requirements, either via a shared parking agreement or an approved use of public parking. So again, not trying to overburden or spread the impervious surface requirements, but to try to encourage a more efficient use of the parking that is in place, and to encourage folks to try to reach out to their neighbors if they have an opportunity where the parking demand is opposite of the two different uses to make use of those spaces.
Trezenberg, I have a question about, it's not, I think it's in the section, but there's the section about parking, and there's a reduction that can, that is, the way it's worded, is that they can come back and get a, request a reduction, and then it has to be granted. The way it's worded is like, it shall be, so they can come to us, get the rezoning, all that's done, then they can go and request a reduction. And the way the UDO is ordered, we have to grant that reduction.
Right.
And so that kind of feeds on this off-street parking. Is there a way we could change that to make that discretionary, and at least to not force it? Because I know there's one, I can't remember the project, they kept coming up, and they're like, oh, we're going to do the parking you require, you require, and ask, are you going to ask for a reduction later? And they kind of tap danced around it and didn't really say whether they would or not, and I knew they could. And I knew that if it weren't in the best interest of the development, you as the planning director wouldn't have the ability to tell them no. You know, and in some cases, you know, we don't want to overburden on parking, because it does create a lot of its own issues. But I don't like the idea that they go all the way through a public hearing, planning commission, back to council, and it all gets done. And they're like, oh, by the way, we'd like to reduce our parking, and you have to do it. So I don't remember what section it is. You can probably hunt it down and find it. But that might be something to add in here, is again, every case is different. And sometimes it makes sense, and sometimes it doesn't. And so we don't want to be forced into doing something that doesn't make sense. So, anyway.
Yeah, we could definitely look at something along the lines of kind of establishing maybe some tiers or something like that, where up to a certain percentage, if staff is comfortable with the signed, you know, traffic or parking generation study, that we could approve it, or if it's over a certain amount, then it would need to come to council or to planning commission, whoever you would want it to go to. Something along those lines, maybe.
That would be good. I mean, really, it's to give you guys the flexibility, even if it's more administrative, that you can, I like you, you're always falling back on metrics. We'd like to have some metrics to make reasons for our decisions. If you need to do that, that'd be good. But I think that's an important word. It's almost a simple word change, but if we want to get more technical with thresholds, that's fine, too. That's all. Thank you.
I think that's an easy one to add in, for sure. Oh, yes. Then, kind of the little subsection under that, for Section 10.67A, for non-residential mixed-use lots that are smaller, we have, I think I've mentioned this before, we have noticed already, and I'm sorry about the scrolling here, but I promise it does kind of make a little more sense. We have noticed that for parcels that are under two acres in size, it is very difficult for them to meet our expanded buffer requirements. As you remember, the buffers were expanded pretty substantially to try to encourage and get a little more in terms of tree preservation around the perimeters of lots. But it has, you know, when you're requiring a, potentially a 45 to 55-foot buffer on a two-acre lot, that quickly eats up the usable area, because the building setbacks are usually like 20 to 25, or something like that. So we have had one case actually already go for a variance. On top of it being a small lot, it was also a fairly narrow lot. So the Board of Adjustment did agree that that was something that needed to be varied. They probably still would have needed a small variance in that case, but staff felt like that still would have been appropriate, because it was a somewhat oddly-shaped lot. And that's the type of thing where going for a variance is usually expected and not, well, not unexpected, I guess, is the way to put it. But for lots that are more regular size, it does seem to be difficult. So we would recommend, again, to allow for half of the required buffer in those cases. You're still getting potentially half of a buffer on each side of the line, of the property line, if both lots are two acres or less. So you're still getting at least the equivalent of one full buffer. So that, again, is the Then moving to Section 5.14, these have to do with the overlays and some of the building height challenges that will come into play for these. The old version of the overlays did tend to severely limit the building height. Now that we have a comprehensive plan that is encouraging some taller, going more vertical, we have some, we have some just flat-out conflicts there. So in 5.14.2, the Commercial Highway Overlay District had limitations, it would not allow for up to a 10-story building. It might have, if the park was big enough, there were some, there were, a couple of the overlays had language about, well, if you, for every additional foot you go above the maximum height allowed, if you increase the setback also by a foot, you can continue to go up. Well, by the time you get to an 80-foot-tall building, you're probably 105 feet back from the right-of-way. So removing some of those caps and relying on the comprehensive plan to help guide and steer what the appropriate height should be, but at least accommodating what the comp plan calls for. So in the Commercial Highway Overlay District, we felt 10 stories would be appropriate. And then along the limited highway access, which is the overlay that covers 540 and 40, those are the areas where we have some of those more high-rise, intense locations in our plan. So allowing that to go up to 20 stories, but still also providing that 50-foot buffer along the interstate itself, and actually adding a little bit of protection to that, so that folks aren't putting the tree protection and silt fence right up there at 50 feet. We would actually require that to be 15 feet further back to give those tree roots some protection. But that would be, I think, a good trade-off to allow for the height, but add a little more protection along the actual buffer. So those are both the same as what we talked about last time. Questions on those? All right. So the first new item that we have here, and it's not a huge item, but in, again, going back to parking and Section 9.3.8. Shared parking, when it was drafted, we focused it primarily just on non-residential uses, because we know that the parking situation in residential tends to be fairly high. So we don't want to be cutting back too far on the we don't want to be cutting back too far on those parking requirements. But we do have, particularly in the Rural Agricultural District, we have more non-residential type uses that are permitted in that district just because it is kind of that rural mix category where you're gonna have the, you know, the one-off car repair place or a daycare center or, you know, the corner store or the church. And, but we didn't have the option to do any kind of shared parking in those situations. So we debated about whether or not to extend it just to all districts for non-residential uses. But what we decided was that primarily within the environmental protection overlays, like the Lake Benson Conservation District and other environmental, where we're trying to limit the amount of impervious, why aren't we then encouraging shared parking if it's doable and workable? So it seemed to make sense there that we should at least, in our conservation overlays, allow for that shared parking for non-residential uses. So curious to get any feedback as to whether you think that's an appropriate step? Should we take it further and just extend it to all zoning districts and with non-residential uses? Something to think about.
Both from council?
I think I need a concrete example. It seems like it would also apply to parks, for example, or... Again, a non-residential, give me a concrete example where this is gonna be really helpful.
Sure. So we might have a, particularly a church, just because they have lots of associated uses and sometimes they're spun off and sometimes they stay tied to the church, but in the case that they're spun off, you know, some of the land next to the church might be for some kind of community service organization that primarily their services are during the week, and the church is mostly in the evenings during the week or on the weekends. Rather than requiring each one to have its full parking complement, they could actually share parking and not have to potentially have like 50% more parking depending on the size of each. That help?
Seems like a small example, but it seems like it's a grander, the, I, what came to mind to me was parks for some reason and having combining... I don't know why, it just seemed like a...
Gotcha.
...impervious surface sort of solution or something somewhere, but...
Yeah, I mean, you are introducing then the, you know, kind of the public aspect of it and what kind of agreements would that take place, but I mean, it could, it could potentially work in that kind of situation as well.
Thank you.
Any further questions on that?
All right. The second major changes that we've put forward for discussion tonight are in the actual use table, section 6.1, and some of the additional standards that go with it. And this goes directly to some comments that we've gleaned from you all related to multifamily and our multifamily zoning districts. If we're understanding the comments that we've heard, one of the focus areas was to take the MFA district and make sure that the description that's in the ordinance, which is also tied to kind of what's described in the comp plan, to make sure that the uses are actually aligning with that. So if you look here in the MFA district column, we propose to strike out the larger multifamily units because in the MFA description, it talks about small format types of multifamily, and we had a whole spotlight on small format multifamily in the comprehensive plan. So this would allow the MFA district to focus specifically on those smaller formats, whether they're townhouses that have, townhouses of various sizes and the two-to-four-family dwelling-type units, but would take out the larger apartment complexes. We also propose to take out of R2, those two-to-four-family, triplex, quadplex. R2 is still primarily a district that's gonna be outside of our water and sewer service area. There might, there's probably some neighborhoods that are gonna be connected to public, but at R2, you're still probably on County Well and Septic. So trying to again, keep that focus there on single-family detached. And then also removing townhouses out of the CMX district and trying to put the focus there on the non-residential mixes in the commercial mixed-use, but potentially allowing apartments, larger apartments as a special use permit in that district. Because some of the commercial mixed-use zoned areas, it is a recommended zoning district for some of those larger centers where residential may not play the primary focus, but the comp plan does call for residential to be able to play kind of a secondary subservient role. And currently, there, there wouldn't have been, if we took everything out, there wouldn't be any opportunity. But we felt that townhouses in the CMX more dense area were probably not as appropriate, but apartments, larger apartments might be.
Two, a question and a comment. So now what we're looking at is sort of MFA really sort of being more for infill type of multifamily is what it starts to look, be appropriate for.
Yeah, I would say primarily, yeah. Somebody still could come in with a little bit larger proposal for different mixes of that, but yeah.
And then the CMX, so we've had quite a few CMX projects come in, and you say the residential's secondary, the residential's never secondary on the CMXs we've seen come in. They're 80% driven by residential. And so I think that's kind of where, I kind of like what's here, and I see what it's trying to do, but I think we're still sort of in that transition period where the mixed-use is really just fancy multifamily.
Right.
And so, it's not a direct reflection on what's here, because again, you, I mean, if you're doing a CMX and you're not getting a special use permit for your 200 residential units, then what kind of project are you doing?
Right.
I think it's sort of the same attitude I had towards our PRDs and PUDs with regards to product type, where it's like, eh, it's not really there. And I think with this commercial mixed-use, the residential part of it is getting lost or put in the, on the back burner in the semantic way. It's like, oh, commercial mixed-use, sounds great, oh, it's all apartments. So I'm, again, it's not directly related to the use table, but some of that's like, it should just be multifamily B. Why are you coming and calling it commercial mixed-use? What other elements are you benefiting off of that type of zoning and not really contributing that actual mixes of use? So again, kind of an open statement on our CMX and how it's coming to us, but...
And I think this, this hopefully would move us, it kind of would send the signal that if you're coming with a CMX proposal, it needs to be more primarily commercial or non-residential mixed-use. But if they do have an overall plan that seems to make sense, keeps the residential subservient, rather than having to try to carve out separate zoning districts, the council could still entertain it as one, one proposal under one zoning district, and you would have the latitude to talk with them about, you know, okay, hey, are the apartments appropriate here per the comp plan? Because with that special use permit, you have that statement about needing to be able to find the plans consistent with the comp plan. So if you feel that it is a, it is an area or isn't an area that should have a small part of apartments as a part of it, you can weigh that, weigh that decision.
Any further, Mr. Dillinger?
I'm just curious, you know, you're talking to a lot of applicants, it's on my council list, I'm starting to get in all these neighborhood meeting notices, that's exciting. It's a lot. It's exciting. You know, you're having a lot of conversations, and what sort of the conversation they're having when they're talking about, oh, should we go for MFB or should we go for CMX? Because I'm sure that's a conversation that you have, and so what is the sort of, I wouldn't want the special use permit part of, I mean, they're gonna need one anyway if they're doing a large project, so...
Right.
What's sort of that conversation like? And I'm sure it depends on what part of the town they're in, but share with like, what those conversations are like?
Yes, some of it comes down to what, you know, for that residential portion, what density per acre are they trying to achieve? Because the CMX and MFB are different. And in some cases, I think the MFB might actually let you go higher than in CMX because it's really the activity center district that lets you truly go higher with the commercial mixed-use. So there is a little bit of a... Height probably difference and an overall density difference, where I think the MFB probably works better for a truly standalone residential project, but for a CMX-style development, they're probably not looking to go as tall, but probably stay more in the mid-rise or low-rise, the higher proportion of the low-rise, just that it's not completely out of character with what the non-residential portion is. So I think it kind of, it tends to come down to that, the density and the height that they're trying to achieve.
Anyone else have any questions, Mr. Matthews, Ms. Singleton?
Ready, so flipping the page on the attachment and going to the, I called this pedestrian movement. It's a little, it's probably a little more about subdivision layout, but it has the benefit of promoting better pedestrian connectivity and circulation throughout subdivisions. One of the things that we noticed was that we had a little bit of a conflict between what the UDO was calling block lengths, and we had maximum block lengths. And then in the engineering manual, we have minimum block lengths, minimum spaces between actual intersections. And what we found is that in many cases, if we took that kind of interpretation of what the UDO's requirements were, we had a very small window of possible street lengths. And in some cases, the maximum might have only been 100 feet longer than the minimum. And it just hasn't been working. So we got together as a planning group and talked about this, and we really felt like this probably has more to do with the block face. And the block face is each side of the street, so each side is its own block face. And, you know, we've seen some of these developments come in, and they use a lot of three-legged intersections. So while one side of the street may be broken up and have a little bit of a break in that wall of buildings that you have, the other side just has this wall that continues and continues and continues, primarily at the, kind of at the edge of a subdivision, unless they're actually making a stub or connection to the property next door. So by making this a block face requirement, even if there's not a street per se, what this would do is require a break in those houses or in those buildings every so often. And so what that does is when you have, it can provide a space for a pocket park, for a little, you know, playground sitting area that gives you some visual relief right up on the street. It helps promote that idea in the comp plan of tying your public realm and your private spaces together. It also gives an opportunity to have your trail network cut into the neighborhood and connect to the sidewalks and not have those so far apart. You can actually get those more frequently, and folks can actually use the trail system along with the sidewalks to get from place to place within their neighborhood. So we've seen a lot of positives by taking that interpretation, and we would like to codify that because honestly, the maximum block length really isn't as important. It's really the minimum that engineering enforces for kind of traffic and safety purposes and making sure that those turning movements are far enough apart and they're not conflicting with each other. Whereas the block face and giving that visual relief, making it feel like there's a little bit more elbow room, so if you do have 10, 10 of those houses that are just 12 feet apart, using our minimum side setbacks, at least every 10 of those or so, you're gonna get a street-sized break. And in that street-sized break, you could have some guest parking, you could have some green space, passive recreation and trail connections.
Any questions, anyone?
I was on that one.
Please. You go forward.
All right. The next few sections that I have in the, in the, in the attachment are related to kind of economic or non-residential types of development. None of that has changed. That is where we did talk about on the special use permit side, potentially upping that threshold on the non-residential for a special use permit. I'm sure that there's been some discussions between you all and some of the developers that are out there, trying to put some of these non-residential packages together, but we haven't touched that, we've still left that as is, but did want to call your attention to that, that that is still in the package. We would also be establishing that new use for, what do we call that, research and development, I believe. And again, trying to hone in on those uses that, you know, the council would really be interested in from an economic development perspective, and making sure that that's not getting tied into the light industrial uses, which is where we would currently categorize it because we don't have anything that calls it out separately. So this would allow us to isolate research and development and be able to incentivize it more with some of these amendments and not inadvertently incentivize more logistics and warehousing and transfer-type businesses.
I have a question. There were two, one small, one is bigger. There was the addition of the industrial manufacturing or production into the activity center as a, as a use, as a permitted use, right? So that's sort of in combination with this square footage change in the special use permit. I have some concerns because the activity center, the way it's written, is meant to be more mixed-use residential, commercial, and not skewed towards industrial and door manufacturing. It's supposed to be an activity center for people, not product, I guess, is the way to describe it.
Yeah.
And so some concerns about an overabundance of industrial manufacturing or production use of an activity center versus what we were, when we're doing the comp plan and doing the UDO rewrite, an activity center was meant to be more vertical mixed-use with almost a small town or community with grocery store and shops and stuff. This, this sort of, while I could see that as almost an accessory use, flexibility to do some light warehousing or something, or small-scale production, I have some concerns about it kind of overtaking what an interpretation of an activity center could be. And that goes back to the... And that goes back to the, and then that sort of links back to the special year permit change on the square footage, because now it's like, okay, we're making these two changes. Well, even in the first version of the change alone on the square footage, it was like, well, if it's an activity center as we have originally envisioned it, okay, that's doable. Oh, but now we're adding this other permitted use of industrial manufacturing or production. And all of a sudden now, it's like I'm coming to the town of Garner with an activity center that's a manufacturing, indoor manufacturing facility with some apartments attached to the side or some commercial on the front to make it look different. So I'm a little... Each, each change on their own is not really a concern, because then with that, you can address it with a special use permit. If you go to, come to us with that, we can say, that's not what we intended to do that zoning. But now it's sort of like this hole of opportunity, and is that the hole we want to open without having our input? That's really the threshold is, it doesn't need a special use permit, and yeah, they're going to AC rezoning. I don't know, I just have concerns about our interpretation of AC. Activity center seems to be changing kind of dramatically.
Sure. So a couple of comments that I could offer for that is, one, there's, there's no AC zoning currently on the map. So anybody's going to have to come to the council to put that in place. So I think there would be the opportunity to control that through the conditional zoning process as to which uses each AC district would permit. And then you've, you've kind of addressed that on the front end, apart from what might trigger a special use permit. The other option could be to go back to what we had proposed at one time, which was to add another zoning district that was exclusively, rather than the vertical mixed-use focus, it had kind of the industrial mixed-use focus, where we could actually have a, another base district.
We already have that. That's like a light industrial. I mean, it'd be a light industrial or a CMX variation with conditions. I, I think that what we're sort of signaling with this change is that we're open to it. And it, it's kind of, then now you're saying, well, then we could come and tell them we're not. But I think the UDO sort of wants to signal properly what we're looking for in that type of district. And again, you know, they're not on the map, but I'd rather somebody, if they want to do that, come and ask for that light industrial or CMX with, that is mostly commercial, and put in flex space and not dress it up like, this is activity center, this is what you said you wanted. So I have some hesitations on, on that, when we have other zoning that could accommodate that, even at a large scale, I think.
So I don't know that any of the, none of the industrial districts would have a residential component to it of any type. And then in the CMX, we're limiting it, potentially limiting it more to just the large apartments. So I guess we're trying to kind of see what, how we could fill the gap to have more of a work-live type option that is more where the work is in the research and development, more industrial bent fields.
Then they could just come and ask for a couple of different zonings.
They could. There is always that.
I mean, because you're not going to have residential, upper residential over manufacturing.
Right.
So again, it just, some hesitations on what we're, in our vision for activity center.
Sure. Okay. Well, we'll continue to look at that. We'll take those comments back and discuss them as a group. Does anybody else have any feelings on that one?
Council?
Let's see. So let's go to open space, because we're right here at Article 8. And again, one of the big focuses of this package is to introduce a requirement for non-residential development to have open space. The comp plan spends a good little time talking about appropriate types of open space in non-residential settings, so this would establish a minimum threshold. Currently, we only require open space for residential development. And going to the, to the last two items under that section, those are the ones where we've added a little bit of extra language proposal here in 8.2, 8.3. So the comp plan also talks about trying to use your open space as central defining features of a development. And there's currently really no language in the UDO that requires, that reinforces that, that it should be centralized. An example could be the Mahler's Creek project that we talked about at the most recent meeting. One ways that project would change under this is that you wouldn't have had the main amenity kind of up in the corner of the site. By having the language that reinforces it needing to be centrally located would have required them to move it into more of the interior portions of the site and to think about their neighborhood organization, different, in a different way. So that's one. And then the second would be to start to introduce some of these, the, the plan calls for things about specifying, actually getting into the UDO, some minimum size, location, design qualities. So again, that also kind of speaks to the need to centralize and start to use these open spaces more as central features and not leftover pieces around the outside. And to Mr. Singleton, to your recurring, recurrent comments about the open, the open play spaces, actually putting something in there that would also reinforce the usability of that space and requiring it to not be, you know, a 5% sloped area, which we've had people try to do, and we've talked about that, but actually putting in that maximum 2%. If it's more than 2%, it's not going to count as that active play field. It needs to be something that is generally, in talking to Maria and Paul, you know, the ADA standard is usually right at 2%, so keeping it within that ADA kind of accessibility field would start to do that. So those are the new things that we've added. Curious if you have anything else that's been on your mind that you would like to see us incorporate or think a little bit further about? And if you're okay with potentially moving this forward, we're, we're ready to do so, and we'll take comments into account tonight before we present the draft for public hearing. But at your leisure and desire for how you would like to proceed.
Singleton, you have any questions?
Yes, well, go to someone else who wants to ask questions about this, what we just talked about.
Matthews?
Oh, nothing.
Barrett? Mr. Dillinger?
I hope Dylan Gray's question. So right now, the public greenway connection, or greenways don't count as active open space as a measured unit, right? They're just, you did this, it's connected, thank you.
Passive.
But now we would be measuring it, and then adding that together. You got a quarter mile of greenway, multiply it out. I don't like that. Because then it's just, it's stuff they're already doing, and now we're giving them extra credit for it. It, it seems, and then it's like, well, we got the trails, we don't need to do this middle spot.
I agree 100%. I was reading over and over again, like, wait a second, I should understand this. I don't, yeah, they're already required to do it, so why are we giving them credit? It's like, and this is just me, you know, a fitness center, a rooftop amenity can count toward active space, but you can't use a pool but five to six months a year, so it's only active for five to six months a year. I know it's active, but it's active from May through September, and that space is really not used, you know? It can't be used, whether it's indoor or outdoor, but anyway. But I do agree with what Damian said. Sorry, just didn't mean to steal, but you did ask what I was concerned about, making it active. It's already there, so let's don't make it active. Active needs to be active. They're not going to go out and play ball on a, on a greenway. Excuse me, yeah. You know, I don't think so. I mean, they're walking, and, but, I mean, if there's something that's already considered part of the development project that we're already approving, it doesn't need, active needs to be a lot of green.
No, I think that's, that's, that's a good comment. I will say that, where that came from initially was for smaller subdivisions, because we had a couple of small subdivisions, and it was hard for them to create a meaningful active space, so we were angling at something that could fill that gap. But in this most recent proposal, we've actually kind of set, we've solved that, I think, by setting that threshold at 25 dwelling units or more. I would say we haven't had any cases where a subdivision has been more than that and ran into that difficulty. So yeah, I think that's, that is a, that would be a change that we could accommodate in, we've addressed our other concern by making a different change.
Thank you for, for adding it. I know we got all these other, these other proposals coming forward, that, you know, this is not required, and at least some people are trying to address some of it.
A very nuanced question on the, the change in the AC activity center of allowing the vehicular ATMs with now added as a permitted use. But then when they go under Section 684 in AC, it says, business district and AC districts, no ground floor operations are permitted, is under banks and financial institutions, with the exception of a lobby or banking kiosk of 1,000 square feet or less or an ATM. And then it was sort of interesting that also in the AC, regular restaurants are permitted, but then drive-through restaurant or curb-side service is a special use permit. And I guess what it dawned on to me is sort of, it's sort of allowing, and again, what in activity center, which is supposed to be, again, more dense use, it's almost standalone banks, whereas in another part of the UDO, it's, they can't even do those services on the first level. So I'm kind of, I think the goal, it sort of creates a sort of opportunity for a bank. There's a conflict there, and I wasn't sure if one was trying to fix the other, and if so, that kind of given it, because it's not allowed at all right now in the use table. And so it was going to be permitted, but again, I compared it to the restaurants, which is permitted if it's sit-down. I don't know, just some clarity on that, because I don't think what we want in the activity center are banks with parking lots around them, right?
Yeah.
Right? So I just look at that, because it kind of, it conflicts a little bit.
Okay. Absolutely. We will incorporate, we'll take a look at that and incorporate a proposal.
Are there any more questions for Mr. Trezenberg? Not any more questions. The action is accept this as information and to request to be placed on a public, for a public hearing and a date to be determined?
If that's okay with y'all, we'll, we'll take the time to, to rework things and then let you know when we have it ready and put it on the, put it on the clerk's pending agenda for y'all to consider at a future work session. To set the date.
Public hearing? Is it a public hearing?
Hearing or work session?
Like, we'll, we'll put it on the pending agenda like we usually do, so you'll see when it's coming. If you're okay with that date, great. If you want to see it tweaked, just let us know at that time. But we'll put it, we'll put a, we'll identify a proposed public hearing date for you. Yes, sorry about that.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. If there are not any further questions, and what has been recommended is okay with the council, okay. Thank you, Mr. Trezenberg, for your brief.
Thank you for bearing with me on, on these.
Not a problem at all. Okay. I'd like to share with the council now it's approached an eight o'clock hour. Do we want to take a break? Council wants to take a break? Okay. We'll take a 10-minute break?
Fair and debatable.
Yes. I call the work session back to order. Now we'll move on to manager's report. We've asked the in-town manager, Ms. Jody Miller, to make the report, please.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem Vance and members of council. A few items to review with you this evening under managers' reports. As part of your agenda packet, we have the April Pending Agenda Items Meeting, and just wanted to briefly highlight a few items for you as we think about the meetings coming up in April. First, looking at the Tuesday, April 2nd regular meeting, under Old New Business, the Vintage Garner Project has requested to move that discussion to the May 21st meeting, so we'll be working with them to move that forward, if that's acceptable for council. In addition to that, we have several other items on the Tuesday, April 16th, the regular meeting, so that would be the second meeting in April. Under public hearings, we have two projects that have requested to be included in public hearings, you'll see them highlighted with requested next to them. One is the Burnett Farms Apartment, and the other is the Homestead at Bryan Farm. Based on council's discussion earlier this year, we wanted to check in with council to see if this was, be acceptable to include this on the April 16th meeting, or if your preference would be to push the public hearings out further into May, just looking at the agenda and the topics we have on the agenda. And then the final items under the work session, we've got a few things I would like to highlight. First is, you'll see the first update is an Economic Development Quarterly Update. This is something that we're going to be bringing forward to council on a quarterly basis to provide council and the community an update on the town's economic development activities and projects. Our Economic Development Director, Nate Grover, will be presenting those things. The first meeting that we're looking at, update that we're looking at is bringing back is that the April work session. And that particular meeting will also include meeting with our partners at GDC and Economic, and Wake County Economic Development as well. So, looking at that schedule, we may end up requesting that the work session start a little earlier than the six o'clock meeting, and so we'll, we'll work on coordinating those schedules and circle back with council on that. In addition to that, there's a few other items on the work session for April 30th. One is the Downtown Development Project Update, this will be the LMG update. This is a, if you recall, they, at the end of February, they're required to provide us an update as to where they were with their project plans, and so this would be coming back to council for further review and discussion. And then Mr. Singleton had also requested that for the April 30th work session, talking about or looking at the issue of the requirement of two exits or entrances for residential subdivisions with a certain number, when a certain number of units are built. And so, wanted to acknowledge Mr. Singleton's request and make sure council's comfortable adding that to the April work session. We also have sort of a standing item for the April work session, the CIP review, that's part of our budget process, so that's going to be an important discussion as we continue to work on the FY '25 budget. And then a point of discussion and interest of council has been to complete our work on cost of services. And so we had presented a timeline to council on sort of what we anticipated that timeline of work would need to be in order to continue that work and provide a model moving forward as we look at growth and development in town. That particular presentation, when you look at the agenda and all these items, it becomes quite a heavy load for that particular meeting. And so, the recommendation of staff would be, is if council wants to move one of those items to a meeting date in May, would be to move this cost of services study presentation. Mr. Nuncaster, who's been working with us on that, could be flexible and could attend one of our May meetings in order to continue that work with us. So that's all I had to, wanted to highlight regarding the pending agenda, are there any questions regarding the April agenda?
Couple of questions on the April 16th meeting. So we have, we have two that we've pushed previously to there, to that meeting. I think having a special use permit during that meeting is probably not a problem, it's pretty straightforward usually. I'm not sure we could, full agenda to add the last one on there, but that goes back to my other question on the Creech Road and the Wilmington Place Project, and we had postponed those to get information on kind of just general growth in North Garner, schools, transportation, follow-up on conversations developers may have had amongst themselves. When will we have, what's the status of those two projects and that sort of more global, not global, local analysis that would put that into context? Because we're going to be seeing that Garner, North Garner Park Project again, and it is in that same corridor, and so I guess that's sort of my question is, what's going to be the, the status of what we're, they're coming back to? And I kind of have just concerns about being, I don't like using the word fair, but being equitable to all these applicants who all have projects in this corridor, and who sort of impacts are sort of balanced against each other and measured. And one of these projects has been, as we noted, in the pipeline since 2020, 2020 or 20-something, one of the projects has been in the project pipeline for over five years. So I think, I put that out there because it merits some kind of discussion on why we delayed those two projects and how we are going to sort of make this analysis on all these projects together.
I mean, I agree, we're going to have them come, and I know that we're supposed to have a meeting, I've got a meeting, we meet on Thursday with one of the persons who wants to meet in twos, meet with us in twos, but I mean, really, what are we going to, again, I think I got a letter today, another one of the public meetings for one of the projects, the one on June Street, the, I think it's the 1306, yeah. So, I think, again, what do we, what, nor do we know now, maybe after we meet, we'll know a little bit more, I'm not sure, but we'll see. I mean, may have to be delayed again, I don't know, but I know, if we resolve, that you can have the Garner Road assemblage to park at Garner Station, or I asked them to take park out of there, so we'll see if they do that. Anyway, that's going to come forward, so if that has a vote on the first meeting in April, then you'll know about some impacts on Creech Road, and then you have these other projects, these other pending projects. We're no closer to resolving them now, today, than we were when we delayed them.
That sort of goes to my question on if, if there's an, if there's not an, if there's an analysis to be done, and the analysis comes back and says that where it needs to be a reduction of units in that corridor, then the question is, who bears the brunt of that analysis and that reduction? And then are we going to put that burden on the ones that are coming before us later? Or are we going to, as a group, say, okay, there are 2,700 units in this corridor, our analysis says we really can't really absorb but 2,000? Well, again, one of these projects has been in the pipeline for five years, and it's sort of a decision to be made, do we distribute that type of reduction across multiple projects, or we just go first in line and then the rest of them kind of have to bite the dust? And they're smaller projects, so the impacts are going to be much more significant on them. That's my concern, is that we pushed those folks back and said we were going to do some type of work, and then we should do that work and make sort of a, a plan for that corridor that is, again, equitable to the proportion of impact, how long they've been working on it. You want to be, we want to be friendly to developers, we have to kind of treat them equitably. Those are just my thoughts.
And what we also need to consider, the impact on the community, and whether it's a good project or not, because between the two projects up there, one could have a significant impact on the improvement on Creech Road, and one won't. One's just going to put traffic on it, because it's not fronting it, and one does have some pieces in it that could, with the realignment, make it a safer road, that where the turn is now. So, you have to weigh, what's the impact on the road? One's going to impact it and not improve it, and one could possibly impact it and improve the road. So, just, and you have to weigh that with the projects, and the type of project they are, and where they're being placed, so is it positive impact or not? And then there's a couple of others, and they're not, you know, there's a project that is looking at coming to Creech Road another way, so we'll see if that ever happens. Coming from Wilmington Road, the industrial project that may connect everything, that's a whole other project.
I think we're working with, with the developers that were postponed until April 16th to see if there are any ideas of anything that they could offer or participate in, so when they come back in April, they've got something to offer. But in terms of an analysis, you know, council made the decision to defer these for about a month. Staff is just starting the conversations about what would a scope of work look like for an analysis to be done, because that's going to be something that is going to take some significant time to find a resource to do the modeling. Several developers have, and staff can also tally up traffic counts of these developments, but that's not really giving a good picture of the impacts. And so, for us to do modeling, we're going to have to find an appropriate traffic engineering firm that can do work on our behalf, give them all the information to model, and they're going to have to develop that model. So, you know, that, that's not something that would have been practical to do from the time these cases were first heard until April 16th, and it may be work that is not practical to get done in a time, in a manner which is timely for, for those cases to hold on to, but that's, that's council's choice. But we're, we're starting to develop that scope for what that modeling would look like now, but we definitely won't have any deliverable from any type of analysis by April 16th.
I don't think we need that level of detail, we need to use Mr. Matthews' common sense. We looked down at South Garner area, that Cambria, Walters Buffalo Project came in, there was a clear traffic issue, an existing traffic issue at Bryan Road. Put our heads together, came up with a plan for that area, everyone got on board, we didn't have to outsource all this other stuff. It's, it's logical, when you look at the numbers of unit, the current traffic counts on Garner Road and Creech Road, to know that you're putting that many units on there, you're going to have a problem. We have a plan to address some of the problem, and if, so I think, we don't need to drag it out, we don't want to drag it out four or five months, but I think we need to look at all these projects in aggregate, and, and maybe we figure the improvements that are going to be made are going to resolve it all, and we can, we've got smart people in the town, we can figure out if it's going to be a home run, it's all built out, or if, again, if it's, we need to scale this back, some are going to come online sooner than others, right? They're smaller projects, so you got to kind of look at the window, when these improvements are kind of going to come. I think that Wilmington Road extension is sort of a, is a debatable connection, but if it's something that we don't, that can be done and we don't have to pay for, that's a win, and I think it helps a lot. And one of these projects, the North Garner Project, is half the units in the corridor. And again, everything is trade-offs. I just think that there's this discussion to be had about that corridor, and we can't, we're not, again, I quote Mr. Matthews a lot tonight, which is worrying me, but we're not going to get it perfect, but we got to try, we've got to put all the pieces there and say, okay, let's assume all these projects get approved, what's that impact look like? How are we going to mitigate against that impact? Maybe you have provisions on if, if that capacity's not met, because a project withdraws, that those, we can, they can add units back, I don't know. But we've got to do something, because as it is, all those projects coming in there is, is going to be as big of a problem, actually bigger, a bigger problem than what's happened around South Garner.
The point you make there, you know, one of the developers, he came up and said, I'm willing to pay one and a half million toward the bridge. Now, that's the type of person that's trying to be a part of the solution, like we did out on Bryan Road. The other one hadn't come back and offered anything, you know, he wants the goodies, but don't want to be a part of the solution. So, that's an issue by itself, and I do like the, the group that came in and said, you know, we're willing to belly up, step up and be a part of the solution. As you mentioned, Wilmington Road, that ain't a total fix, but when you add that piece into it, that certainly helps what we're trying to achieve here, is moving traffic out. So, so in order of priorities, like Gray said, that we've got one that wants to do something and, and be a part of the solution, that's the one I'm willing to listen to, now the other guys, whomever else, needs to step up and be a part of that, because we know it will work if they do it, and it helps move that traffic and, and the developers, so.
I think, I think one challenge with the Wilmington Road, even though someone's offered for money for half of the crossing, is even if we got money for the other half of just the crossing, there's a whole large undeveloped stretch of Wilmington Road that is not practical for us nor any combination of developers to get together, because it's, we need right-of-way from a lot of people who are not developing their property. So, so, you know, a scenario that you will likely hear staff come back to get your, your take on would be, what if, if the funds that were being provided, that are required to be paid for half of the Wilmington Crossing, not knowing when that's going to be practical to be done, could those go towards other points of connectivity along the corridor that might get some other, other points of connection made? So, it's, it's required to be paid because of that crossing, but with the, the many moving parts about not knowing when we could ever build the rest of that crossing, you know, one, one discussion staff has been having is, with developers, is what if we took those dollars but used them to help make other points of connection that might be east-west connectors between Creech?
Been reading my mind for the last week, because I've come to the conclusion that I don't really care about Wilmington Road, because Creech Road is what's in existence, and the problem is on the existing Creech Road. Biggest difference between Creech Road and South Garner is, South Garner did have different outlet points, we had different roads, Clifford, you know, you get on Mount Hebrew, New Bethel, whatever, you had different ways you can go. Creech Road is stuck with Creech Road, and going up to the Creech Sanford Split and Garner Road, there's no other outlet. And Wilmington, as you said, John, there's a big gap, not just, you know, a few, not just a few feet, that's a big expensive gap, and so where do you focus that? Now, again, I know there's other projects talking about coming down another street, name escapes me, but there's no other outlet. So, my issue is the road that exists is, and one of the projects just started making road improvements, so I'm thinking here, thinking, you're not helping us wanting to put however many hundreds of units and cars out there, I got it right here, where is it, 1306, 300 multifamily and 70 townhomes, 370 units, you're not helping us, because you're going to dump it out on the same road. So, my concern is Creech Road, and trying to get the realignment straight and get that intersection safer, that's something that will benefit everyone, because who knows from the Tryon Road extension is going to happen, I don't think that's on the, that's not on the front-runner route, that's not a priority for Raleigh, so that's another outlet that is not going to be available. So, I look at trying to improve the existing road as we can, we can't curb and gutter and put sidewalk on both sides, we're not talking about that, but we've got to try to make it safer. And right now, these two projects are on one side, at least you make one side safer, that's better than no side safer. Of course, the bridge is not going to be, you know, changed anytime soon. I think we need to try to look what we can do to make the road safer, whether the development's coming along or not, but. make the road safer, whether the development's coming along or not, but as we know, there's available land that somebody's going to, I mean, one of those projects, I think Jess said, has been off and on for years, the one beside the solar panel. So, I'm just looking at trying to help Creech Road, the people who live there, and drive there, and if any new development comes, how we can make it safer for everybody. Because we've got to remember, the, is it Tryon Point Apartments, or, yeah, is two hundred and fifty or so, two hundred and thirty?
Seventy-three, one seventy-three.
Okay, one seventy-three. But there's the project, the addition on to the Gateway Community also, fifty or sixty individual homes, I think, you know, they have the existing roadway. So we've got to think of those projects also, they're not massive like an apartment complex, but fifty homes is fifty homes.
I'll be quiet, Mr. Ray, for a second.
No problem. Any questions?
End of that conversation.
One second, Ms. Matthews, you have anything what I ask?
I agree. Anything we can do to Creech Road is going to help our situation, that's a given improvement. Those that's willing to help, you know, I lean more toward them as trying to be part of the solution. Those that don't, you know, that's a whole different story. And DOT, I don't think they targeted anything or to help anything over there. And I'm just asking as a point of clarification, you know, as a town, is there anything that we can do on that? I know funding's tight, we had the funding come in, which we can contribute about, what, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to workforce housing in that area. Is that, any of that fund could be used to help in any way, or am I just barking up a tree and not making any sense with it? I'm just trying to figure, what can we do with the developers, as well as maybe a little bit with assistance with the town, to make that road safer and approach it that way? I'm just throwing that out on the table.
I think it just speaks to the need for the, you know, addressing the transportation plan, and just in general, and then maybe in looking at, this is a subset of that analysis, because we've gone from Wilmington Road and money to now saying, we're never going to do Wilmington Road, because if you don't do it now, it's not going to get done in our lifetimes, right? You're saying we're going to, and that's a legitimate debate for us to have, to say, let's focus on Creech Road, but that's the conversation we need to have. And then the question is, we want to make it safer, and the question is, well, can it be made safer? And then, how much is it going to cost? Right? And I don't know, because I don't go up Creech Road that often, I don't know where the danger spots are, and I don't know what improvements would make it safer, but that's the sort of conversation. And then what's the price tag? Because then that's sort of saying, okay, all these people who are dumping traffic on the Creech Road, how do we, how do we, like we did with Bryan Road and Wythe, have a developer agreement that says, this is the play-in, and even if we don't have a solid plan, if we got a rough plan, that this is, these are the improvements we want to make.
Here's your cost, David.
And here's the cost, and let's come together and figure out, because, yeah, we need those partners, like we did with Walters Buffalo. And we've got projects coming that, or we've approved, that are contributing some amount to that, and it'll get done. So, it's a...
It would be good to know that figure, because at least we know what we're dealing with. So when we sit down with these guys, here's the number, how can we get there and make this safer and better? And for the project you're looking at, are you willing to step up and be a part of this solution?
I think part of our challenge is defining what everyone's faults are on what makes it safer or better.
And I don't know that, yeah.
Staff's going to have a different answer than council, and y'all are going to likely have a different answer than citizens. And so, I think it's hard enough to put a price tag on it when we all agree what they all, all the improvements should be. And in this case, I think we've got more definition to work on, to determine what the expectations are.
And as Gray mentioned, we're talking about curb and gutter, we're talking about making it safe. So, John, where do we pull that trigger to capture that data we need to know, so we can work through this thing? Because knowing that figure would be very important. We've got to have a starting point.
We've got to define what the danger is.
Yeah, that's be a starting point.
That's where you've got to make a list, is it this portion, this portion, this portion? Is it the speed combined with low sight vision on driveways? Because that's the other thing, it makes, the more traffic you put on, the more dangerous it is for residents who live there. So then, you've got to just look at, so we've got to make that as a community, with the people who live there, and staff and us, and say, these are the five most dangerous things about Creech Road. How do we fix them? And our development partners have resources, they've got engineers and stuff on staff, bring them into the conversation, say, how would you make this road safer? Right? And that's a real partnership, when you're getting everybody in the room together to do the most economical thing, you've got expertise, let them help us. They got those folks.
Bringing us back to the original question, is looking at the schedule, looking at the agenda for April sixteenth, whether we want to continue on with the currently, the way it's supposed, or do we want to try to make adjustments?
Mayor Protem, if I could make a recommendation, we've heard the discussion of council this evening, and the desire specifically for the Wilmington Place and the thirteen oh six Creech project. Let us circle back with staff and the developers for those projects to see, is there going to be new information to share with council, to bring it back at this meeting? Also, understanding what is, you know, what are, looking at Creech Road and the safety issues associated with that, could staff identify between now and that meeting, what would be sort of the top three to five safety issues that would need to be addressed? And let us work on that issue, and circle back with council on that item, to see if it makes sense to keep it on the April sixteenth meeting, or there needs to be additional time to get that work completed. Does that seem reasonable to council?
Yes, I have a question. So, are we sort of de facto saying, forget Wilmington Road? Gray's smiling.
Well, no, no, I'm going to de facto, I think we need information, but the fact is that you've got a road that you're looking to spend money on, that you still have a huge link to connect that costs money, and you have an existing road which is narrow and doesn't have a shoulder, and has no curb, doesn't have curb and gutter, and has sidewalks. And so, where do you want to focus the effort? Because if I recall, Wilmington Road was, was it two-lane divided median? Or it wasn't four-lane, it was two-lane divided median, wasn't it?
Two-lane, probably two with a turn, ultimate cross-section, you mean? Probably two with a turn would be my guess.
Okay.
But I think when the, and I wouldn't imply, Mr. Jones, that we abandoned it forever, just the timing practicality, it's challenging. And I think one thing that makes it very challenging is a large stretch of that, that is currently in, the ownership has no plans to develop it beyond residential use for themselves, they're not going to be required to make improvements on their half, and so then that would be a hundred percent on someone else, us and others, to do, and the right-of-way to do it.
And also, you look at future transportation projects, or some current transportation projects that we can't fund, and would you focus on that, or would you focus somewhere else? Making improvement at intersection, or whatever it may be. To tag one more point that you raised, Damian, that I like what you're saying, and I'm with you a hundred percent, it'd be nice that we could sit down with these developers at a meeting and say, here's what we have identified, and if we have an estimate cost, it's nice to have it there, what are we going to all do to make all this work? And they'll sit down eyeball to eyeball, and everybody that would potentially be involved should be at that meeting, and so, we're all working on the same sheet of music, trying to reach a common goal.
So let us do that staff work, and let us see where we are with that staff work. I also want to make sure we check in with Attorney Jones about making sure, whatever conversations or requests that are being made, that they're legally, legally allowed to have those conversations and requests. But let us do some more work on that. We've heard council's questions and concerns and interest regarding that part of town, specifically Creech Road area, and let us continue to work on that. What I was also hearing from council is comfortable moving forward with the SUP for Burnett Farms Apartments on the April sixteenth meeting, but it sounds like there might be an interest in moving the homestead at Bryan Farm, that project, to a meeting in May, is that accurate?
Sort of depends on the progress that can be made on the other piece. If they're coming, if these two are coming back, yes, but if they're not coming back, it could...
Well, and the challenge is going to be, remember, we have to do the advertising appropriately, the ten days ahead of time, and so that may be where we're going to have to make some decisions, maybe sooner than we would hope to, based on just the requirements for that. So, we can certainly circle back with the developers for that project, and let them know that potentially they could be in the May, the May window for that public hearing. For the work session on April thirtieth, as I mentioned, that agenda's getting pretty heavy with pretty lengthy topics, and so, staff's recommendation would be that the cost of services work, that we push that to a May meeting, and ask Mr. Nooncaster to come attend one of our May meetings. Is council comfortable with that approach?
Uh, we would.
Okay.
Yeah, maybe the second meeting of the work session, whatever works better.
Okay. We'll see what his schedule looks like, because we want to just make sure this work continues, it's an important conversation, that staff is committed to doing the work, so that we've got better information to share with council. So, that's all we had for the pending agenda. I have a few other announcements, if there's no other discussion with council on the pending agenda, a few other announcements I wanted to share with council this evening. First is regarding the Garner Road sewer replacement project. The contractor for Raleigh, the city of Raleigh's Garner Road sewer replacement project has mobilized as of yesterday. So, traffic on Garner Road will not be impacted until the week of April eighth. So just wanted to let you know that that work, they're starting to mobilize, it'll be about another week or so before it'll actually impact traffic there. We are still in the process of our spring unprepared cleanup, Public Works has been very busy. There's been a lot of unprepared debris that's been pushed out to the street area that Public Works has been collecting. We're a little bit behind, because the volume has been so heavy this year. So, we hope to begin the green and gold routes for pickup as of tomorrow. The last route is the tan route, hopefully that we can start a few days after that, with the goal of having the entire cleanup work completed by mid next week. So just wanted to make council aware of that. Also, it was very timely that we had Dr. Taylor here, talking about schools and population growth and impact on schools. I wanted council to be aware that staff is meeting with the Wake County Public School staff on the tenth of April, to share information about growth that's going on in the town, the impact that's going to have on schools, traffic concerns, all those things, really making sure that connection is made, and that we're sharing information appropriately, so that we can plan appropriately, and the school system can plan appropriately as well. So we're excited to restart some of those conversations with the school system. And finally, the last item I would just want to remind council of, and we're very excited about this, on April eleventh is our annual service award program for town employees. Once again, we're going to be hosting it at Garner Rec Center. It starts at eleven AM. We'd love for you to stop by and join us, have lunch, maybe say a few words of thank you for service for our town employees. It's always a really fun time to get together with our employees, and they always look forward to it, so we'd love for you to be there. And there was a meeting invite sent out to kind of hold that time on everyone's calendar, so look in your email if you didn't get it. So, eleven to one thirty, on April eleventh, which is Thursday, and it's going to be at Garner Recreation Center. So, those are the updates from the managers' reports this evening. I'm happy to answer any questions, additional questions that the council may have.
Any questions for the town manager? Thank you very much for the report. Now, moving on to the attorney's report, Attorney Jones?
No report this evening.
All right, thank you. Council reports, any council reports you may?
Just a thank you to staff. I've started getting those neighborhood meeting notices in the mail, I was like, what is this? Weird envelopes, and my wife was like, what is this? So that's, it's actually good, it's interesting to see the amount of activity that's going on. The attorney's giving us good advice, if we all show up there, don't talk to each other, basically. I've also had a couple of residents reach out to me, and I reached out to police chief, and then we had Matt Poole here. There's interest in reducing the speed limit between, on Timber, between fifty and Aversboro. They're just the level of speed, people trying to get out, trying to make turns. The police chief was favorable to the idea. I think seeing that heat map tonight also kind of indicates there are a lot of, we already know there are a lot of accidents at the intersection. But I think where there's another development going in, just south of the post office, there are townhomes going in, so there's just more cross-traffic and people trying to get out. And I know people don't necessarily go the speed limit, but they always go over, but if you lower it, they go a little bit slower fast, I guess. So I put that out for council to think about. And the last, this is for the interim town manager, do we have an update? I've had a couple of residents reach out about the encampment. What's the staff's update on that situation over there at four oh one and seventy?
So, there are no official updates. What we can tell you is, we've been in contact at many levels, at the staff level, with Department of Transportation about their plans for cleaning up that area, and addressing that area. So we're waiting for them to give the permission to put the trespassing signs up, and then to start from the law enforcement side. And then once that's completed, the cleanup can actually start at the site as well. So, we've asked Public Works and police to do some extra patrolling of that area. We've had some reports of some of the people staying over at the encampment area, coming up to cars on the road and those kinds of things. And so we've asked that the police put some extra patrols over that area, just to make sure everyone stays safe. Also, Public Works is doing their very best to kind of keep the area as clean and tidy as we can, and under the current circumstances. We do know that further down the road, South Saunders, action has been taken, and that area is being cleaned up. So our hope is that, that once that's all done, it will move up further, and we'll be able to address the area right there at seventy as well, sort of the Lowe's area. So, we're working on it, we continue to get emails and calls from residents wanting to know sort of what's going on there, what we can do. And so, we've shared with them sort of kind of where we are, and what we've been working on, and also just indicating that we know that this is an important issue, and that we're working really hard with our partners to resolve it. So as soon as we have more information, I'll definitely make sure council's aware, but that's where we are. Ms. Berenger?
Well, they don't really take them anyplace, they sort of move on, and that's the challenge with these kind of pop-up encampments that happen. They tend to sort of move from one location to the next location, and so, that's a larger sort of policy issue that we're going to need to work on, that lots of communities are dealing with. When you remove one area and clean one area up, it tends to move on to another area. And so, we're going to have to work with our partners just to make sure we stay on top of that as best we can.
And city limits of Garner, we have an ordinance against panhandling, is it?
Yes.
Okay. I'll offer up, I think we're handling the one at four oh one and Old Stage Road is my understanding. That's where I thought, how that's being done, and I know the police have to take care of that, but they like to park over there at the Circle K, and they got their lawn chairs, and it's a very commercialized business there ends, but harassing the people coming, especially the ladies in the parking lot. So, I agree, we, and I, we...
And just as a reminder, the area that we've been talking about on seventy, although there's a Garner entrance sign there, it's not actually in the town, it's actually in the city of Raleigh, and it's Department of Transportation right-of-way in the city of Raleigh. So we've got multiple partners that we're working with to address that issue.
Do you think that would eventually, legally can be done, that the Garner Police Department right in our area would handle that particular thing, or is City of Raleigh going to want to maintain it?
I don't...
Could look into a mutual aid agreement, but our police do have jurisdiction outside of our town limits. Usually that's for a pursuit-type situation, but there is some existing jurisdiction, but it would best be handled with a mutual aid or a memorandum of understanding, inter-local agreement.
Okay, okay. Because I know our police department's out there solid, and Raleigh has that on the fringe area, and not bragging on our police, but I think they could do a better job of it.
So, between our public work side of it, our law enforcement side, our administration side, we're sort of working all those, you know, all those avenues in order to make sure this gets the attention that it needs to, and gets addressed as soon as possible.
Thank you. I have to remember, I talked with Chief Smith...
I have to remember, I talked with Chief Smith last week, get an update, that people in the encampment know the rules. They got moved one DOT right-of-way at South Saunders that, and came up here. They know it's the right-of-way, they know it's in Raleigh, when the Garner Police officers someone go there, they tell them that, and they can't do it. I've heard it's happened more than once. So they know, you know, you want to know where they're gonna go next, they're gonna go where they can find the next DOT right-of-way.
Exactly.
That was a possibility. So it's, it's, it is complex, because it involves Garner, Raleigh, and DOT, but they know what, what they're doing, and, you know, again, some of those people, we have a homeless ministry at Garner Methodist every Saturday, and you talk to some of those people, and some of those people, that's the way they want to live. Whether they have, you know, whether it's an addiction issue, or mental health issue, or that's just the way they want to live, that's how some people are. And so it's, this is not a, you just, you feel some movement down the road, well, it might move down the road, it might come down around here, we better, we better be careful what we ask for, where they may go, then they go on Tim and Drive or Hammond Road somewhere, where there's a lot of DOT right-of-way. So they know, they know what they're, I won't say they know what they're doing, but they know what they're doing.
They know what they're doing. Okay, thank you so much for that, for that update. Anything else to deliver? Counselwoman Barringer? Counselman Matthews? Counselman Gray?
Yes, I want to thank, I had been communicating with Mr. Hodges, and police have been very helpful in the situation with the stoplights, the crosswalk at Timber and Thompson Heather Springs, that had a computer error. We have some parents from Heather Springs who walk, and the lights were changing, and drivers who liked to run the light were getting close to hitting, parents taking the kids to school. They got some wrong DOT down there, temporary fix, now that they're gonna, something's wrong with the computer, the switch, and they're gonna make it right, and so she, it's very helpful. Sent an email today, you got the email, and very thankful for police, for their, their help with that also, that situation. Because this is not the first time this has happened. This has happened over the last couple of years, multiple times, they keep having issues with the computer boards.
Add thanks to Leah Harrison for continuing to get all the different groups at DOT to try to focus on who needs to solve the problem, so.
I appreciate the help there, for those, those folks trying to make a safe crossing over to school. So, and again, thanks to Public Works for the trash pickup that is, you drive around and it's these huge piles of whatever, and you next to you know it's gone. Our long, hard, steady work.
If there are not any further comments or questions, can I ask for a motion to adjourn?
Sure.
A second?
Second.
Motion has been made in popular second, and a pair of votes. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Over the polls? Meeting adjourned.
Nasty weather out there, gang, be careful.
Can you hand me your gavel, just a second? Now, we, we can't...